I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we do have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. And at this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we remain standing for Tom Murbowski, a custodian from 1986 through 2019, who passed away on September 19th, 2023. 4.1, we have our audit presentation with Carl Widmer and Charles Tradier from Drescher and Malecki, L.L.C.
Can you hear me, or should I pick this up? Good? All right. Good evening, everybody. Carl Widmer from Drescher and Malecki. Also with me tonight is Charles Tradier. We are here tonight to present on the results of our audit for the school district's fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. We did get a chance earlier this evening to meet with the Audit Committee of the Board and go over our audit process and the financial statements in greater detail. So tonight, rather than bore you with all the details in a long presentation, we have a short slideshow just to walk through. So each year, the deliverables from Drescher and Malecki, what you can expect is, of course, the basic financial statements. In this document includes the main reason that we're hired, and that's to perform our audit and provide our professional opinion on the district's financial statements, whether we believe them to be fairly stated or accurate. So we perform a series of tests on those numbers that are included in the district's financial statements to ultimately compile our professional opinion on whether we believe they can be relied upon. And we are prepared to issue what's called an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion, what you should strive for. Also, when the financial statement is, is a compliance audit that we perform over the district's federal aid. A significant dollar amount of federal aid comes through the district and is administered through various programs. We performed that compliance audit and also had a successful audit there with no reportable findings. Also, a management letter, auditor communications letter, and finally, an extra classroom activity report, which is just a smaller financial statement on the various clubs and programs within the district. Each year, there are a few communications that Drescher and Malecki, as your external auditors, are required to communicate to the board. We went over each of these, again, in greater detail a little bit ago, but a couple just to highlight for the whole group tonight. And the first is our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards, and essentially to point out that our responsibility is to test the district's financial statements to gain assurance that they are fairly stated. So we perform tests and audit the financial statements. They aren't our financial statements. They are the district's financial statements. We perform an audit over those amounts to determine whether or not we believe they can be relied upon. Another distinction is often when you hear auditors, you might associate it with looking for fraud. Our audit, we're hired as the financial statement auditors for the district. The goal of our audit is to gain confidence and assurance over the dollar amounts. It's not a search for fraud. During the course of performing our audit, if we believe there to be any material or significant dollar amounts that indicate fraud, we'd report them to the group, but we have not encountered those. Thank goodness. Also, second from the bottom, the last one I want to highlight before we get into the dollars, is independence. Users of the district's financial statements, the residents in the crowd here, banks, granting agencies, federal government, if they're going to rely on the financial statements and we're providing the opinion that's giving them that assurance over the financial statements, it's critical that we're independent from the district. We can't have any conflicts of interest to create a bias or anything like that. So myself, Charles, and our whole audit team, we examine our relationships with individuals at the district to make sure that we're in the correct, objective position to serve as your auditors, and this year, again, we are in that position.
As far as analytical trends, we like to complete our presentation with some of the analytics over the last five years of how your revenues and expenditures have fared over this five-year period. So really, before I dig into it, the really, the last known normal year before the unpredictability and the school closures of the pandemic was the first column there to the left, 2018, 2019 fiscal year, where your revenues and expenditures almost broke even at that point. And then looking ahead into 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, you've seen revenues gradually increase, with 2022 and 2023 seeing some larger increase than normal, and you've seen the unpredictability in the spending over the course of that five years. At the end of the current fiscal year, under audit, June 30, 2023, the far-right portion, your revenues, the blue line, have exceeded your expenditures by $11.3 million, which was the result of increased state aid that the district was fortunate in seeing, not only Lancaster school districts, but all New York State school districts have seen this unpredictable increase in state aid that historically, we were fortunate enough to just get what we budgeted for. So one-time increases there, as well as increases in unanticipated sales tax that continued to be higher than budgeted, have led to this dramatic, or this more significant increase this year compared to prior years. Also included in the increase in revenues was increase in interest earnings of $1.7 million. And on the spending, the expenditure side of things, your spending went up by $3 million from the prior year. $1.6 million of that went to debt service that was recently, some bonds that were recently issued became due principal and interest, and regular inflation and cost of providing services from transportation and instructional functions there. So of that $11.3 million increase in fund balance, as you can see here, unassigned fund balance went up about $8.7 million from $4.9 last year to $13.6 million this year. That represents about 10.4% of your next year's budget. We show this chart because school districts in New York State are subject to real property tax law, Section 1318, which requires district to maintain up to 4% of unassigned fund balance, and if it exceeds, there has to be a plan put in place to spend down in future years. And as we saw in 2019, 2020, the first year of the pandemic, you exceeded the 4% there, and a plan was put in place to transfer that additional funding towards new projects in the future. And again, 2022, 2023, the current year, you exceed that amount at 10.4%, but that $8 million increase there has been planned to pay down some future debt, resulting in future savings. The remaining increase in fund balance, $2.6 million this year, was added to the red column here. Those are your fund balance reserves, your capital projects, your bus reserves, your retirement reserves, employee benefits reserve. So you're able to plan for future costs there. You increase your reserves by $2.6 million. Most of that went into your bus purchase reserves. As far as other disclosures, we did get a full-scope audit, meaning we didn't have any disagreements with management. We, what we requested was provided to us to complete our audit in accordance with the standards, so clean audit overall. At this point, we're open to questions, and if there's no questions now, our information is up there, and you guys can contact us at any point during the year. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Widmer. Just want to make note that Mr. Jackson, Mr. Talbot, and Mr. Davenport are excused this evening. 4.2, can I have a motion to accept the audit report?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Talarico, in Mr. Davenport's absence, does the Audit Committee have a recommendation?
Yes. So based on the presentation given, I move to accept the audit results as well as the corrective action plan.
Thank you, Mr. Talarico. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 4.3, Board of Education recognition.
October is always Board Appreciation Month, and from an administrative standpoint, and someone who's worked here for going on 13 years, we have had the honor of working with fabulous boards that have been supportive of our students and our teachers and our administration, and really making this district a place where more and more people want to send their children because they know they're going to get a fabulous education here. And I could stand up here all day and tell you that we appreciate the work that you've done, and that we appreciate the time and the energy that you sacrifice and sometimes take away from your families in order to do that job. But we have found people that are far cuter than me to do that for us. So we're going to start with Nick and Shriya. And then, we had planned for Mr. Jackson, we didn't realize he wasn't going to be here tonight, so if Dr. Velli, would you accept that in his absence? Mia and Aurora. So these little statuettes were made for you by our Project Lead the Way students. And look, Mr. Talarico and Mr. Sage are already showing them off. So our students in Project Lead the Way did the electronics on these, did the etchings on them, built them for you, and engraved your names on them and your position on the board. So I'd like to also thank the Project Lead the Way students and their teachers as well for the work that they put into these. But again, we just want to thank you for the work that you do and the sacrifices that you make and the time that you take away from your families to make sure that Lancaster is the fabulous school district that it is. Thank you.
Thank you so much, especially to the students who came here today to give these to us. I think we will all treasure these forever. Parents, please feel free to leave now. I know it's going to be late, but I do think the kids maybe deserve some ice cream. On to 4.4, we have tenure certificate presentation. Mrs. Gannon?
Let me do a little finagling here. That's what I get for trying to finagle it. Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight? So I have the privilege this evening of honoring five special education teachers, and I'm going to start with Kim Ernie. Kim, you want to come up? So four years ago, we were fortunate enough to hire Mrs. Ernie. She had come to us with some great experience and was able to hit the ground running. Mrs. Ernie is currently working with 4th grade students at William Street and has become a very successful consultant teacher. She provides strong reading instruction for her students and does a superb job co-teaching 4th grade math. Her teaching colleagues enjoy working with her, and she can always be counted on to support them, and them here tonight to support her, as well as her students. Mrs. Ernie takes the time to develop meaningful relationships with her students, and they truly benefit from her instruction. There is a genuine care for each individual student's success, and she is a fierce advocate for their needs. So fierce, I've been on the other end of it sometimes, in all in amazing ways. She fights for what her kids need, which is great. Mrs. Ernie has excellent follow-through with parents and consistently demonstrates a great work ethic. She takes time to develop meaningful and well-written IEPs that are a true reflection of her students' abilities and needs. For all of the above reasons and many more, Kim is highly deserving of tenure and will be an asset to our school for many years to come. Congratulations. All right, next we have Justine. Justine, come on up.
When Justine first joined us four years ago, she worked as a traveling special education teacher with consultant teacher responsibilities between Court Street and Hillview. Like, if you were here last week, we talked a lot about this group of teachers teaching during COVID, which was a whole different experience. So during the pandemic, Justine excelled at online instruction and went above and beyond to make it work for her students and families. Since then, she's settled at Court Street, and the building is very lucky to have her. Justine is an excellent reading instructor, and her lessons focus on teaching students the essential skills. Just as important, if not more, I've observed her on many occasions working with students to build their confidence as readers. Last year, she participated in a district review of the reading interventions used in our special education program, and this year, she's piloting the new UFLI reading curriculum. Justine has an exceptional knack for connecting with parents and making them feel understood, and she does the same with her students. They absolutely adore her. Ms. Karashevsky is a talented teacher that is highly deserving of tenure. She will make great teaching contributions throughout her long career in Lancaster. Congratulations.
So Ms. Ladoss also provides consultant teacher services to our 4th grade students here at William Street. This includes teaching special education classes, including special class reading, co-teaching math, and supporting her students in every way possible. Throughout our time observing her lessons, it's obvious that she has an excellent co-planning relationship with the general education teachers on her team. She's always looking for ways to differentiate the needs of her students and provide them with the best support possible. Because of this, her students truly benefit from this intensive and well-designed instruction. Ms. Ladoss is always enthusiastic when she teaches. Her voice and energy shine through in her lessons. She uses the same level of energy when supporting our students, who may require additional management needs in the classroom. She advocates for them and works with her team to provide the supports they need to be successful, and we are very appreciative of her for that. Theo has developed into a wonderfully effective teacher, and she continues to be reflective about how she can grow. This is the true hallmark of a professional. Ms. Ladoss is richly deserving of this tenure recognition. Congratulations. There you are. Mrs. Pascharella teaches special class ELA at Lancaster Middle School, but will soon take on a new assignment as consultant teacher working with 7th grade students. Elizabeth is hardworking, conscientious, and a highly organized teacher. These characteristics allow her to carefully plan and deliver lessons that meet her students' reading and writing needs. Her lessons incorporate technology and have a variety of Kaegan structures to keep students engaged in learning at all times. With 7th and 8th graders, this is not an easy task. She also takes time to carefully assess students' learning in each lesson, and I have been truly impressed with her dedication to follow up with them individually after. Elizabeth always follows up on her responsibilities, such as attending CSE meetings, so much so that she covered for, I think, seven staff members the other day. That's how dedicated she is. Drafting IEPs, connecting with parents on a regular basis, and working with colleagues on behalf of her students. She cares deeply about her students, and it shows in everything she does to make them successful during their time as middle school students at Lancaster. Mrs. Pascharella has worked extremely hard to earn tenure and is so deserving of this accomplishment. We are excited to see the wonderful impact she will continue to have on students as she transitions into her new assignment. Congratulations. We do have one more tenure recipient tonight, Travis Pizanka. He's not able to join us, but I just wanted to take a second and say that he's working with our students on the football field, actually, I think his second favorite thing to do here outside of teaching. But I want to just take the opportunity to acknowledge him for all the hard work and dedication he puts into our students here at Lancaster.
This is, you know, a huge event in a teacher's career, earning tenure, especially at Lancaster, because we hire the best, and these individuals represent the best. So again, congratulations to each of them. Moving on to 5.0, correspondence. We have no additional correspondence to note. 6.0, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion on 6.1, the regular session, from September 18th, 2023?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Good evening. On behalf of LASSA, our supervisors, our principals, our assistant principals, it is truly an honor to say thank you. First and foremost, again, our kids come first, and that has always been number one with all of you. We have served you, many of us, you know, as parents, and your own children coming through our school, and collectively, together, teachers, administration, but most importantly, Board of Education, it's kids first. So on behalf of LASSA, and I know I speak for our community, thank you so much for all that you do and you continue to do when you volunteer your time. So thank you so much, and again, we appreciate, we really certainly appreciate you, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowe. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Yep. Good evening. Just to follow what Jackie was saying, again, the LCTA would also like to, you know, thank the Board for their dedication and their service. You get elected to your office, you listen to people, you, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly, and you do it all for free. So we just want to take a moment and congratulate you, and thank you for your time and your service. And we would also just like to take a moment and congratulate our five newly-tenured teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Well, thank you to both Mrs. Bowe and Mr. Abraham. I think I speak for everyone when we say, you know, it's truly a pleasure to do this role, and, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone on this, but it really is easy to do this in Lancaster because everyone is just so great here. You know, you've got great teachers, great administration, great staff, so it really does make it easy, you know, to say yes to kids. Thank you again for everything. On to 8.0, Board Reports. Do any Board members have anything to report?
I just want to say that this is amazing. Thank you so much, Mr. Bear. I was in the first class of Project Lead the Way, and we did not make these. This is really, this is awesome. I'm so excited. I cannot, I don't know where I'm going to put it, but I might just carry it with me and plug it in at meetings and here, wherever I go. But thank you so much. This is just, I'm so excited about it. I just also wanted to thank Coach Rupp, who is so graciously, again, helping us this week doing a Coaches vs. Cancer game on Friday. Our district is so giving and so generous in so many ways, and I don't think that we promote it enough, how much we help other organizations. And I'm so excited to be working with him this weekend in getting some funds raised for the American Cancer Society. And the LCTA is also having a team at making strides against breast cancer this week. It's really great to see, especially in October this month, for breast cancer awareness, and seeing our school district really help in so many different ways. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fesher.
Yep. First of all, thanks again. I will be taking this with me everywhere. I have a laptop and plugging this in, so thank you for that. I got to attend our open house at the high school, which was, I'll stop short of saying exciting now that both my daughters are in high school, which is sort of depressing. But it was fantastic. I do not do well with following instructions, and we had enough students there that were just absolutely fantastic and helped me get around, and the teachers were fantastic too. So it was a really wonderful experience to go through that, and my depression soon became happiness because of the experience I had there. So I want to thank everyone for that experience.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. All right, on to 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valley?
Yeah, Mr. Jackson just mentioned the open houses, but since the last board meeting, we've actually held all of our open houses. Open house season began at William Street, then it extended to our K through 3 buildings, and then the middle school, and then last week, the high school. And like Mr. Jackson and the entire Board of Education, I'd like to thank all the teachers, district-wide, administration, for both really doing nice presentations to parents and having really good conversations. Also, a big thank you to all support staff and buildings and grounds who had our buildings shining and looking real sharp. The schools looked great. And of course, thanks to the thousands and thousands of parents who actually showed up to engage with teachers and all of us in the hopes and efforts and dreams to support their children and their children's learning. This is a partnership, and we here in Lancaster understand that, and we also appreciate it greatly. Lancaster Middle School invited Kimberly Smith, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Lackey and Mr. Tresman, there they are, for putting that together. I know there's other people involved than that, but they're here tonight, so I'd like to thank them personally. They had Kimberly Smith come out. She's a community outreach specialist from the FBI. She spoke to our 7th and 8th graders on Tuesday, September 19. Kimberly Smith has worked for the FBI in Buffalo for 14 years as a tactical analyst. She works in Crimes Against Children Division. She also was a member of the FBI's National Child Abduction Rapid Deployment Team and a member of the FBI Buffalo Evidence Response Team. She certainly has had her experiences and stories. The presentation, quote, "Your device, your safety, your future," had a purpose, and that was to teach our students on how to be safe online. It was an eye-opening experience for our students, our faculty, our staff members, and anyone else was there. Much, much more needs to be done by all factions of our society, our government, et cetera, et cetera, to truly understand the power of these devices that we have in our hands and that we place in our children's pockets and hands as well. These dangers exist, they're real, and this was a nice step in, of course, learning how to navigate this new world and the safety within it. And finally, just one other thing, a few members of the University of Florida Literacy Institute team spent a week, last week, at Lancaster High School, providing professional learning for close to 85 of our K through 3 faculty members, some William Street reading specialists, and all four building principals. Other attendees from around Western New York were teachers from Clarence, Williamsville, Orchard Park, Grand Island, and Bosse's. And I'd like to personally thank Karen Markioli, who's doing a fantastic job leading this initiative, and I'd like to thank her for all her hard work and effort and dedication to this task. The board has heard numerous presentations on this topic, but in essence, the focus is providing training to help all our teachers align and providing explicit and systematic reading instruction for all K through 3 students. I would like to thank everyone involved for embracing this very, very important work, especially on the heels of a pandemic and some learning gaps. So thank you to all who are involved, and thank you for being a part of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. On to 10.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? And 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes, including the addendum added today?
Some of.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Dr. Valley, did we have anyone in the audience today?
Yes, we do. Megan Shitschinsky? Where is she? There she is, right there. So, I'm sorry. Megan, if you just stand up real quick. Welcome to Lancaster. So just so you know that, everyone shows up to the board meeting, and some people do, so Mrs. Maricinelli was kind enough to let me know that you were in there because I can't see everybody and everything like that. But welcome and thanks for coming this evening. We look forward to having you for many, many years as a part of the team.
Thank you, Dr. Valley, and definitely I want to agree with Dr. Valley. Welcome to Lancaster. I said earlier that we hire the best, and, you know, truly, we thank you for being here, and we can't wait to have you working with the kiddos. All right, on to 11.1.2, tenure recommendation. Can I have a motion?
Some of.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the committee on special education?
Some of.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the committee on preschool special education?
Some of.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.0, our business and financial items. 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items?
Some of.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2 is a policy adoption, 3420. Can I have a motion on the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment in the district? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.3, can I have a motion on the policy adoption, 6121, sexual harassment in the workplace?
Some of.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. All right, it looks like we also have Ashley here as well. Okay, you were just added today, so I apologize about that. Dr. Valley, did you want to say a few words?
Certainly. Ashley and I just met a couple hours ago. I don't know if you know this, but E&amp;L teachers are hard to find and highly sought after. And so we were thrilled to have Ashley be part of the interview committee, and the interview committee literally drove her to my office. So for the first time ever, I asked the Board of Education and called the board president and asked if I could walk someone in. So Ashley, congratulations and welcome to Lancaster Central School District.
And thank you so much for coming this evening. You know, when he called me, like, you know, whenever we get E&amp;L teachers, like, oh, you know, so, and again, we hire the best. So congratulations, and I can't wait for you to get to work with our kiddos. 12.4, 12.5, and 12.6 are all policy second readings. We will vote on these at our next meeting. 3430 is culture, climate, and inclusivity in the district. 5140 is administration of the budget. And 7410 is extracurricular activities. 12.7, can I have a motion on the food service operating reports for August 2023? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.8, can I have a motion on the surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.9, can I have a motion to accept the auction results? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.10, can I have a motion on the amended contract with Maria Blask? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11, can I have a motion on the bond defeasance? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.12, can I have a motion on the club creation for culture, climate, and inclusivity? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion on the contract with Jonathan Rizzo? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion on the contract with Christopher Taber? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.15, can I have a motion on the contract with James Welsh? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 13.0 is our public hearing. We don't have anyone signed up to speak this evening. 14.0 is our adjournment. Before we adjourn, I just want to mention that our next regular meeting is November 6, 2023, 7:00 p.m., right here in the William Street School. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.